I want to do a meeting.
Okay, I'd like to follow this meeting to order and start off, we will swear in the newly elected officials. Supervisor, attorney, treasurer, and recorder.
Do you do it all at the same time?
You, uh, who's doing swearing in?
Eric will do the, the. Oh, you're, you're being sworn in? Yeah, then you would.
Some of you should swear.
Cause you're in the chair right now. And then, yeah, and then you. For you when you in.
Read your right hand, please. I.
I.
Eric Simonsen.
Eric Simonsen.
You solemnly swear that I will support.
You solemnly swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
And I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the Office of.
Discharge all the duties of the Office of.
Uh.
County Attorney.
County Attorney. Uh, in Wright County.
In Wright County.
Thank you.
Thank you. But I will support.
Constitution of the United. Constitution and so.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States, but I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully, faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the Office of Supervisor.
Discharge all the duties of the Office of Supervisor.
In Wright County.
In Wright County.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I petition, I offer. You solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the Office of County Recorder.
Treasurer.
Treasurer, sorry. Discharge all the duties of the Office of Treasurer.
Discharge all the duties of the Office of Treasurer.
Wright County.
Of Wright County.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. I, Denise Baker.
I, Denise Baker.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the Office of County Recorder.
Discharge all the duties of the, of the.
Office of County Recorder. In Wright County.
In Wright County.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter required by law.
Okay, uh, next item, we like Chairman and Chairman Pro Town.
I nominate Dean Pliss as Chairman and Rick Rafferty as Pro Town.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes.
Will you? Will you, uh, read the minutes of the previous meeting?
December twenty seventh, twenty twenty two, Chairman Rasmussen called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors Board at nine AM. Members present were Cluse and Rasmus and with Hoggable present via, via Zoom. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of December nineteen, twenty twenty two were read and approved, approved claims for payment. Bob Ritter spoke in open forum and wanted to say thank you to the Sheriff's Department Secondary Roads for all they do, did over the weekend. Jason Wests also spoke in open forum. When the courthouse closes, the employees still get their regular pay for those days. Uh, there is no extra pay for the Sheriff's Department or Secondary Roads crew. If employees live out of town and are required to work during an emergency event, it is highly suggested that they stay in town, that, in the town that they work in. Adam Clemens Wright County Engineer gave an update on the secondary roads. There were four work orders completed last week. All personnel went out on Sunday, December eighteenth, spreading chemicals. Uh, dr- trucks went out on hard surfaces on December twentieth and December twenty second. All personnel went out on Friday, December twenty third and Saturday, December twenty fourth. On hard surfaces and covered as many gravel as possible. Crews completed four rescue missions after hours during the winter event. Sandy McGrath, Wright County Public Health Administrator is encouraging individuals to get the flu shot. It is not too late to get the shot. Tricia Rosendahl, uh, Fair Board Manager met with the Board of Supervisors to give their annual update of the fair happenings this past year. The Fair Board continues to make improvements at the fairgrounds, including electrical work on the grounds, new sound equipment and many projects to the grandstand area. They are requesting twenty six thousand five hundred dollars in annual, annual funding plus five thousand project match for their future projects to the fairgrounds. And if there's any increase the board can do, it would be appreciated as there is a rise in all costs throughout the fair operation. This will be discussed at budget time. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Rasmus and to adjourn. Um, as the Board of Supervisors motion carries. Motion by Rasmus and seconded by Hoggable to open the meeting as drainage district trustees motion carries. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Chris Van Ness Franklin County Supervisor to approve the joint agreement with Franklin and Wright County Joint Drainage District one hundred dash two on the Franklin County Conservation to exempt the conservation for specific assessments to their property lying between Oakland Drive right away and the Iowa River. Motion carries. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Rasmus entered during the meeting, motion carries.
Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, they'll stand approved. Claims have been around, there was drainage, there was payroll, and there were also claims. Um, they've already been reviewed and signed. Open forum for public input. Okay, item number seven, appoint Angela Wharton to the Board of Health for a three-year term to replace Jeannie Agina.
Jeannie Agon.
Agon, excuse me.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Uh, motion in a second to, uh, appoint Angela Wharton in place of Jeannie Agon to a three-year term on the Board of Health. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Her nomination kind of keeps the coverage on that side of the county also because all of the members are kind of spread out, and so she's from the same area that Jeannie is, so we want to make sure everybody's represented.
Good. Uh, item number eight, set reimbursable mileage rate for twenty twenty three. Uh, current is point six two five, uh, mile, which is in accordance with the federal rate.
Does that change at all? Have they got the new number out?
It has changed sixty five point five, sixty five point five. I would recommend that we stay with the federal rate.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion and a second to, sorry. Well, uh, you run into me. Uh, I have a motion and a second to increase the, uh, reimbursable mileage rate for, uh, twenty twenty three from six point two five per mile, uh, to six point five five per mile in accordance with the federal rate.
Was that you that made the motion?
It was me, it was me that made, yeah, it was me that made the motion.
I second it.
Carl seconded.
Aye.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number nine, set the drainage warrant interest rate. Currently, it is at six percent interest.
State Treasurer still has six percent as of this morning.
Okay, typically do we follow them?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to maintain, uh, six percent is the current, uh, drainage warrant interest. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Designate official Wright County employee holidays for twenty twenty three. Those official holidays are President's Day, uh, Monday, February twentieth, Memorial Day, Monday, May twenty ninth, the Fourth of July, uh, Tuesday, July fourth, Veterans Day observed on Friday, November tenth, Thanksgiving Day, Thursday, November twenty third, day after Thanksgiving, uh, Friday, November twenty fourth, Christmas Day, which is Monday, December twenty fifth, and New Year's Day, Monday, January first.
And also Labor Day. You might be skipped over.
Did I skip over Labor Day? Uh, yes, Labor Day, Monday, September four. So nine holidays. Is there any? I would entertain a motion to the Senate.
Make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to, uh, uh, do the nine, uh, holidays for Wright County, uh, as reviewed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Uh, authorize petty cash funds for varied, various offices, uh, county auditor is currently at twenty dollars, and engineers at fifty dollars, public health nurses is at fifty five, county sheriff is at two hundred, and the county treasurer at fifty.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the petty cash office, the office petty cash amounts, uh, as reviewed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Accept the count of cash held, uh, by the Wright County Treasurer at the close of business, December thirtieth.
He wants some numbers.
Yep. Uh. Okay, total, uh, total cash was three thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars. Total in checks was thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and twelve cents. Uh. Uh, and then driver's license cash, which is fifty dollars for a total of thirty-six thousand, one hundred dollars and twelve cents. I would make a motion to, uh, accept the cash count, uh, of the Wright County Treasurer as opposed of business on December thirtieth.
Sorry.
I have a motion and a second to accept those, the cash counts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Does this go back to you? No, it goes to baby, okay. Very good. Uh, item number thirteen, review and act of twenty twenty-three wellness program agreement between ISAC, the Iowa State Association of Counties, and. We've been. Presented in this, uh, last year. We had, uh, wellness pillars that we were able to do, um, in order to qualify for a discount through ISAC for our insurance. Um, this year they have changed that. Where the wellness program, uh, the only required. Um. Thing is that the employees get a, a physical and also do a health assessment. Um, they are reimbursed, they can earn dollars for doing that. Um, but we have to have, is it eighty-five percent we have to have?
So eighty percent of participation with a physical and exam, physical and the online assessment will get us four points if we exceed age of that.
Okay.
We need a total of five percent to get our five percent discount.
Okay.
The online assessment. We need sixty percent of employees with the online assessment that'll give us the remaining one point to get us back.
And this last year, uh, we had a total savings to the county.
We had a total savings, the county has seventy-nine thousand. Number eight here. Seventy-nine thousand, seven thirty-nine, eighty.
Yeah, seven, seventy-nine thousand dollars. So this is, uh, a big deal, a big savings to the county. Um, the participating county must, uh, form a wellness committee, which we already have done. And one of those members is required to be the supervisor. Uh, encourage employees to complete a physical with a physician and complete their online assessment. Uh, that's in order to receive our discount on the premiums. Uh, we have to comply with the HIPAA privacy rules to ensure confidential, confidentiality, and we are to encourage our employees to participate in the Wellness Walking Challenge, um, which allows them, if they do that and, uh, and their physical and their assessment, they can earn up to three hundred and fifty-two dollars. Um. Uh, which is not a cost to the county, but is a, a cost to ISAC. They reimburse us for that.
And there was ten thousand steps for how many days?
Uh, two hundred and forty-two days.
February through September.
Yeah.
That's five-ish miles per day.
One more?
Five.
Yeah. But again, the encouragement is to walk and do, do this step challenge. Uh, you get a dollar a day for every day that you get ten thousand steps in, so if you miss a day, if you miss two days, that doesn't end it for you. Between the, during that two hundred and forty-two day period, um, you're able to earn a dollar a day.
So do you log it in? They give you a bit, you log it in?
Yep, so you can, if you do not have wearable device, you can earn one by doing the online assessment and then the care bridge review, which has replaced the, our last employee systems program, the EFR.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So if you do those two, in three to five days, you'll receive a link. And that link is shipping information where you can have a fit that shipped to you. Uh, free of charge.
It's just a wearable, it's not a smart, smart device.
Yes. It's just a tracker.
Okay, and then you just, you, you just put that, you fill it out and send it to them, or do they know? No, so that, you have to actually hook up like, to their.
You connect to their portal.
Okay, and they'll, they'll see how many.
Into portal, you will connect a device, connect your device to that portal. It will track from there going to your portal and reports automatically to that.
Got you. And only certain, there's only certain apps that do it. And they try to make it as much as possible, you also have directions, like if you have a, like an Apple iWatch, um, that you have to connect to a different app.
Yeah.
That will connect to another app, I think they go through.
A very large email will be going out after this, depending on.
Okay, explain that.
So I would entertain a motion for us to participate in the wellness program.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, uh, to, uh, participate in the wellness program agreement uh, between Iowa State Association of Counties and Wright County, uh, for twenty twenty-three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Uh, so Ryan Bourbon with, um, Assured Partners would like to meet with the board to go over the new wealth, uh, uh, health insurance renewal.
Good.
Um, he, I, he wanted to do it on the seventeenth, I said we meet on Mondays, the sixteenth.
Good.
And then he said, well, can we have a special meeting? Would the board be interested in a special meeting on January seventeenth? Um, to meet and do the health insurance. Then also he'll have, um, to go outside of ISAC. Oh, like go to Wellmark.
Right.
And do something outside of, of ISAC to see what our premium would be.
Right.
Um, I said, I don't know.
Is he coming to Monday, does he have conflicts on Monday?
Well, he said his Monday was, that sixteenth was full, and I don't, I guess I didn't ask about like the twenty-third, if he could come on the twenty-third.
Yeah.
Let's see, but.
Yeah. So the public could hear the presentation.
Yeah. And then also, uh, we have Bob Powers with Paradigm Benefits, and he's getting us a, a health insurance quote outside of ISAC also.
Good.
Um, just to see where we're at, see what it is. I mean, it's, it's painful to change, but if it saves the county money.
Yeah, we have fourteen percent increase this year, so it's worth looking into.
And, and maybe it's something that if we went a year away from ISAC and then maybe go fully self-funded, you know, it just kind of see what does it look like moving forward.
Good. Okay, uh, item fourteen, make the following appointments for twenty twenty-three. Uh, courthouse, county farm, drainage, township assignments.
I think it might be the last page, should it's like this, of your packet, it's right, it's you. No, it's not, okay, it looks like this.
Okay, courthouse. Let me see, courthouse. Okay, those are all done by the board as a whole.
I'd make a motion to, uh, continue that as, uh, it was last year by the whole board.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, appoint supervisors to various boards and committees.
I'd make a motion, they stay the same as they've been for the last few years.
Second.
A motion and a second to maintain the, uh, our participation in the boards that we've done for the last several years. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Uh, drainage attorney.
I'd make a motion to keep David as a, David Johnson as a current drainage attorney.
Second.
Move motion and second to, uh, maintain David Johnson as the drainage attorney, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion carries. Appointment of township trustees and clerks. I think there were two vacancies that.
I did hear back from Kelby Ryerson, he didn't pass, so we still need a trustee for Troy.
Troy Township.
Yeah, but we had, uh, um, for the clerk for Troy.
Um, yeah.
Hillary, Hillary, Hillary accepted that, yeah. And I saw in the emails, someone in his rant and also.
Okay, so, uh, we've been provided, uh, from Joan, uh, the people who are currently living in those two townships, so, uh, we just need to talk to some people and, and get somebody that is willing to.
Yeah, fill that position.
Fill those positions.
Then also, uh, if you flip over on your, your sheet with all the names on the next page. Now, on your organizational meeting.
Next one.
That's your agenda.
Yep.
On the, on the next page, Belmont Township has, um, an expired term, two years, um, and you'll need to appoint Wayne Stall for that unexpired two-year term.
For Belmont?
For Belmont Township, it's, turn, flip your page over, please. In the top right corner.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay.
Belmont Township, unexcited by your term, two years, is appoint Wayne Stall, and then also Lake Township. There's an unexpired term for two years, and you'll need to find somebody to fill that position.
So we're looking for Lake, Grant, and Troy, and we need to appoint, uh, Wayne Stall as the Belmont Township, uh, unexpired term of two years.
Correct.
Okay. I'd make a motion to appoint Wayne Stall for the Belmont.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Wayne Stall as the Belmont Township, uh, for a two-year term as township trustee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Make an appointment for the list provided for a four-year term. This, so this whole list. Yeah.
Okay.
Because they are.
Currently serving.
Currently, they are, well, their, their terms are now expired, their, their, their term expired twenty twenty, December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, so you need to do, appoint them for another four-year term.
Got you. Okay, so, uh, I would entertain a motion to, uh, appoint the following trustees and clerks, uh, for their terms to expire in twenty twenty-six. Belmont Township, Lawrence Johnson and Ray Stoxer. Lang Township, Mary Osterman and Brian Ellis.
It's Marty.
What, say that again?
Marty.
Excuse me, Marty Osterman, I'm, I apologize. And Brian Ellis. Boone Township, Thomas Huntley and Nate Huntley. Dayton Township, Dana Wonkin and Lynette Watts. Eagle Grove Township, Gary Fennell and Aaron Wagner. Grant Township, John Campbell. Iowa Township, Al Bailey and Amy Miller. Lake Township, Joel Sebby and Dan Oddland. Liberty Township, Adam Harvey and Kathy Fletcher. Lincoln Township, Michael McGee and, well, Michael and Mike Stevens. Norway Township, Scott Hasty and Brian Harley. Pleasant Township, Eugene Pauls and Kevin Pauls. Troy Township, Hillary Klaver. Vernon Township, Greg Denio uh, and Marion Dinger. Wall Lake Township, Brittany Howson and Emily Cook. Woolstock Township, Ryan Claude and Tammy Harrison.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to, uh, approve those appointments for four-year terms to expire in twenty twenty-six. Um, as trustees and clerks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, official newspaper, Wright County Monitor, Eagle Grove Eagle and the Belmont Independent.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that, I have a motion and a second.
You want to give that for me?
And we have received, uh, letters from each of those, uh, mid-American publishing, uh, for the, uh, for the Wright County Monitor and the Belmont Independent. Excuse me. For the Eagle Grove Eagle and the Wright County Monitor, and then also from the Belmont Independent, um, from, uh, Dirk Vanderlinde. So I have a motion and a second, all those in favor of appointing, uh, three papers as the, uh, official newspapers.
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, medical examiners and investigators. These are appointed every two years. Uh, medical examiner would be John Aronson, deputy examiner, uh, Andrea McLaughlin and Dustin Smith. And then medical investigators, is that a separate one? No. Uh, would be Mike Witters, Vinnie Frank, Tiffany Tolliver, Monica Forbes, Andrew Nelson, Nielsen, uh, Melanie Plain, Savannah.
Snitzer.
Schnexler, uh, Matthew Ringenberg and Amy Erickson Keller.
But Savannah Snitzer, she's along Greenway County.
No, we have some that are in Webster County, but they've agreed to help.
Share.
Right, yeah.
What, Jean Aaronson, you know that, he had a, I think, three of them.
Other than these here?
No, that, he had, and we attended Andrew Nelson and Emily Plain's door, and I think he added Matthew Ringenberg.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve those appointments as medical examiners, uh, deputy examiners and medical, medical investigators. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, appoint members to the Board of Adjustment for expired for expired terms. Board of Adjustment is Jay Hanson from Clarion, Dave Nelson from Belmont, Deb Vance from Eagle Grove, Elizabeth Severson from Belmont, and Aaron Wagner from Eagle Grove.
And Deb was expiring?
Yeah, she's accepted another four-year term to expire in twenty twenty-six.
Now, Elizabeth, is she stepping off, or is she gonna continue on? Or she goes on?
Uh, she doesn't expire until, yeah, until the end of this year.
Those are. I think I'm, I maybe messed up, cause, and I did, uh, changed everything from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, I think I changed their time, so I think there's supposed to be.
You're the only one.
Deb was only one.
Yeah, it should be a twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
And I apologize for that, I.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion and a second to approve, uh, Deb Vance to, uh, uh, another four-year term, uh, expiring in, uh, December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. term uh expiring in uh December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six to the Board of Adjustment. Uh and then also the current other serving members of the Board of Adjustment. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay, motion carried. Appoint members to the Wright County Economic Development Commission and Board. Uh currently serving on those is Todd Foss. He expires in December of twenty twenty-three, Margaret Warden at large for Dow's uh December of twenty twenty-four. Brad Robson of Belmont Growth Alliance. Uh December of twenty twenty-four, Kent Rutherford at large uh December of twenty twenty.
Two, awesome. And Kent are twenty twenty. Yeah.
Okay, Mike and Kent are twenty twenty-two, are those one-year appointments?
Three-year years, yes. Three-year.
My commission will be reviewing that on a week from today.
Okay.
I'll bring, we'll bring that back to the supervisor.
Okay, very good, uh and then Mike Harrison Eagle Grove uh Community Development Corporation.
Is there a motion to approve?
I have a motion.
Yeah.
Very well.
Motion to table it.
I have a motion and a second to table the appointment of members to the Wright County Economic Development Commission uh until next week. All those in favor.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
They meet on next Tuesday, then you'll do it on the sixth.
Correct, okay, on the, on the seventeen, what was it?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Authorize the following resolutions. Resolutions twenty twenty-three pack oh-one attendance of meetings. Uh is hereby resolved by Wright County Board of Supervisors that they authorize elective and appointed officials of Wright County to attend all meetings approved by the Executive Committee of the Iowa State Association of Counties. Be it further resolved that clerks in the various offices shall be authorized to attend meetings when approved by their governing officer. Uh dated again the third of January twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh-one.
Second.
Motion and a second by roll call vote, Carl.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Dean, aye. Uh motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh-two, payment of claims prior to a board meeting. Is hereby resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Wright County Iowa pursuant to the provisions of section three thirty-one point five oh-six. Uh sub-paragraph three of the Iowa Code of the State of Iowa. The auditor is hereby authorized to make the following payments without prior approval by the board. For fixed charges including but not limited to freight, express, postage, water, light, telephone service, contractual services. After a bill is filed with the auditor. For salaries and payrolls, if the compensation is being fixed or approved by the board. The salary or payroll shall be certified by the officer supervisor. Under whose discretion or supervision the compensation is earned, again dated the the third of January twenty twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve, approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh-two.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve twenty twenty-three dash oh-two by roll call vote, uh Carl.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Dean, aye. Motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh-three, treasurer naming depositors. Consider revolate, resolving naming the depositaries uh approved by the Wright County. Uh Wright County Treasurer is hereby authorized to deposit in Wright County funds in amounts not to exceed the maximum approved for each respective financial institution as set below. First Citizens Bank in Mason City, the Clarion Office, twelve million dollars. First State Bank Webster City in the Clarion Office, five million dollars. First National Bank Eagle Grove in the Clarion Office.
That's called First Bank now.
It's called what?
First Bank.
First Bank, okay. First Bank, uh Eagle Grove within, in the Clarion Office, five million dollars. First State Bank in Belmont, uh one point five million dollars. Wells Fargo Iowa, uh and again, there isn't a Clarion Office uh out of San Francisco is their main office.
No.
Okay, so so that one will go away then, okay?
United Bank and Trust in uh the, in Dow's, a hundred thousand dollars. Greenbelt Bank and Trust in Belmont, three million dollars. Iowa Public Agency Investment Trust out of West Des Moines, one million dollars.
What do we use that word for?
Uh investment, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so uh we have resolution twenty twenty-three oh-three. Um with with two changes, uh first National Bank of Eagle Grove being changed. First Bank of Eagle Grove and then deleting the Wells Fargo uh Iowa Bank.
I make a motion to approve uh resolution twenty twenty-three oh-three, naming depositaries with those changes.
Second.
A motion and a second on resolution twenty twenty-three oh-three by roll call vote, uh Carl.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Dean, aye. Motion carries, resolution twenty twenty-three dash four. Construction evaluation master matrix. Uh again, this is the requirement to have this resolution in order for us to have uh input into the construction of confined livestock facilities uh in Wright County.
They will let us know what their goal is, what that is.
Right.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution twenty twenty-three oh-four, construction evaluation of the master, master matrix. Sorry, again.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty twenty-three oh-four, the construction evaluation uh master matrix. By roll call vote, Carl.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Dean, aye, motion carried. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh-five, sheriff naming depositaries. Uh Wright County Sheriff Resolution twenty twenty-three oh-five. Wright County Sheriff is hereby authorized to deposit Wright County funds in amounts not to exceed the maximum approved for the financial institutions as set below. First Citizens Bank in Mason City in the Clarion Office, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Dated again uh January third uh twenty twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh-five.
I'll second that, I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty twenty-three oh-five by roll call vote, Carl.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Dean, aye, motion carried. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh-six, recorder naming depositories. Uh Wright County Recorder is hereby authorized to deposit in Wright County funds in amounts not to exceed the maximum approved for each respective financial institution as set below. Uh First Citizens National Bank, Mason City in the Clarion Office, one hundred thousand dollars. Again dated today, January third uh twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh-six.
I'll second that, I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty twenty-three oh-six. Uh recorder naming depositories by roll call vote, uh Carl.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Dean, aye, motion carries. Okay, item number sixteen, Adam Fleming, Wright County Mayor.
One of the things that uh we must have left off is that you need to review. And it was left off the agenda, but review the eminent domain compensation commission, and I do have the list of last year's appointments.
Okay.
And that is on your original list, um it's highlighted and yellow there, yeah. Um but that is something that probably you need, need to start working on, make sure that you get somebody appointed to.
Yes, we went through this pretty thoroughly last year, didn't we? Isn't it, no, and some of the people passed away.
Well, we did, but we need to make some changes, because we never did finalize it, okay?
Did you, like, number eight on here, he's, he was deceased a couple of years ago. And we were gonna work on it, but nothing was ever finalized there.
Okay. Yeah, I think.
That'll be an important one in the next.
With the potential for the Iowa Utility Board to approve the pipeline um. So we should uh divide and conquer this and uh take some names and contact them, see if they're willing to serve, and then I would imagine that there's issues with conflict of interest on the eminent domain board, I mean, if they're an investor or if it's going through their property, they probably.
I think a judge, once it goes to that, a judge will decide who uh is on it, and the sheriff will serve them as. Yeah, so we don't, we don't actually, like, if these are a pool of people, if it goes to that point, the judge then will appoint who needs to be on.
Okay, very good, and they would take that into consideration at that time.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks, Eric.
Okay, Adam, I'm sorry.
Yeah, uh just have two things for you on the agenda, consider two new hires for truck drivers out of the uh Belmont Maintenance Facility, uh we put out for two truck drivers, because uh two retirees out of that uh facility, um so we interviewed, I think we had what, ten applicants this time? So we interviewed three um that we felt that were uh good for this position, and two out of the three, I think we're gonna go with. Those are the names presented, um. One lives eh is a relative of one that we currently have, and the other one lives five blocks away, so, which is good. Yeah, come, we're very happy with the two that we made decisions on, they both have accepted. Um pending, obviously, all the items on the pre-employment uh process that we go through.
Can I make the motion to approve your hire?
Second.
A motion and a second to uh consider two new hires for the truck drivers out of the Belmont Maintenance Facility pending.
Um. Pre-employment physical, uh background check. And your approval, obviously.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion carries, you'll feedback.
Yeah, you can, you can file thirteen of my, so, um. Uh update on roads, blades, uh cleaning up. On a week prior, uh and doing winter event, obviously, trucks doing winter event, uh we had completed fifteen work orders, thirteen of those were our so removal um with the blower. We actually had, we put out work orders for the blower to go out and um had spots that we needed to push back. Obviously, from the uh the event. Um and then, so our winter call-out, call-outs were December uh twenty-fifth uh and twenty-sixth. Um outside working, normal working hours, uh so we had all the trucks go out, um both uh trucks and blades on Sunday, uh ran hard services first, then the blades went out and tried to run on the gravels. We did hook up, and we prepared for on Saturday, hooking up all the B plows that we have for dump trucks, they're still able to hook up to them. So that really helped, because these drips were very, very hard, and we couldn't just run a skip on gravels, so.
So have we got V plows, if we were to come into this situation again, do we own V plows that were not able to hook certain trucks up to?
Correct.
And are we working on correcting?
Uh I think every V plot actually went on a truck that, because all the old trucks got kinda, hey, put them in. Um we try to keep them away from the newer trucks, just because we don't, it is very hard on them, so. Um it takes a couple tabs, we gotta weld on some things on the, on the front mount, so.
Good.
Uh as it gets older, obviously, we'll throw it in the mix, but we've got guys that can run all the vehicles anyway.
Okay, okay.
I think we have, I wanna say half a dozen V plows that can still go on. We haven't purchased any uh V plows with trucks in a long time, I've never actually purchased any, that's just what we have.
I didn't know you had V plows for your dump trucks.
Sweet, yeah. Yeah. So, um obviously, and then we have the blower work orders, um that blower is nineteen sixty-eight Wildcat. It's still, you know, it's, it's probably held together with gum and stuff like that, so it's, it's getting up there, but it still works. We have to actually specifically put it on the Eagle Grove uh end loader, because that's the largest one we can have run it. Um it's actually really, really heavy, it can only travel about ten miles an hour. So, and lots of smaller ones, they're on, so. Um we are through uh through the rest of the week, the guys did normal working hours, trying to get cleaned up and just catching up, so. Go ahead.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
You can go ahead and probably do your old business through business, and then we can go back to the side table.
Okay, old business.
I had nothing through the holidays.
I had, I had a, an emergency meeting uh followed by Zoom uh for uh CFR, we had uh some water pipes breaking, one of them slowly down in Des Moines, and the repair was above the authorized amount, uh so. But that didn't take very long, so. Update on meetings coming up this week.
Nothing.
Economic development next week.
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, I'm open to. Uh and then we have the one o'clock, we'll have budget discussion, are we gonna do that in here?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, item number seventeen, consider going into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code twenty-one point five. Lima, uh India, to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment hiring performance. Or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless or irreparable injury to that individual's reputation. And that individual requests a closed session, uh I have a request to go into closed session um from Adam.
I got one more thing, Betty, could you email this to Lion Energy? It's saying that I approve all their contact. Or merge it stop. Thank you.
One moment, please.
Uh so I would make a motion that we go into closed session.
Second.
Uh, I have a motion and a second to go into.
One moment, please.
Pardon me?
Please. Okay, now you can.
Okay. Uh I've made a motion to go into closed session in accordance with uh twenty-one point five L and Lima. Or no, that's a one, one and I is in India.
Second.
I have a motion, and saying all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I did, I looked more right, I didn't see anything wrong with it. Will you, let us, Eric, look at it and make sure that we've got all the levers.
I didn't tell them, no, they're just gonna fire it on. I don't know if that's normal, one year to establish, six year to harvest, because of that was
Yeah.
Six-year seed.
I don't see a problem with that.
So, any problems with those contracts?
Yeah, I didn't, I did, I looked them up.
I'll send it to Eric and have him go over it, good, um and then you guys got the financials.
Yes, yeah, it looks good.
If you wanna just email me that map so I can get it for you, and then, maybe come down here.
You wanna do this, this was three supervisors and make.
I would, if I could, I can, if you want me to, I will.
You wanna just do this, please, before you start?
Yeah.
Okay, we're back in open second. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Nothing was decided, no action taken in.
Yeah, no action taken in closed session. I have a motion in the second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
What's opposed today? Motion carried, we are adjourned at ten forty four. Who made the motion?
I did.
Yeah. Carl second.
Oh, I am, don't worry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you're click, don't click the roller, click the left on, there you go.
Yeah. You know.